Okay, we have Jane Pritchett from Vision Church with us again tonight to do the invocation. If everybody would please rise.
If you know me, the last thing I need is a microphone. Our Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight and we ask your blessing upon those here who are involved in the meeting tonight. We ask your guidance that the decisions here made are for the betterment of our community. And in addition to those here, Lord, we ask your blessing upon all those who serve our community, either in an official capacity, the council here, our police, our firemen, our city workers, but also our residents here who serve our community in helping one another and basing their love for our community. And it shows in our faith and what we do here this evening. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please remain standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jane. All right, 6:04, call the meeting to order. Roll call?
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Here.
Commissioner Ward.
Here.
Commissioner Carnes.
Here.
Commissioner Cruz.
Here.
Mayor Downs.
Here. Approval of minutes from the regular meeting, July 14th, 2025. If there are no questions or concerns, we'd entertain a motion of second to approve as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Carnes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cruz. Roll call?
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. Approval of bills to be paid. Same thing here. If there are no questions or concerns, we entertain a motion of second to approve as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Kirkpatrick and a second by Commissioner Carnes. Roll call?
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. All right, down to appointments. We have a motion and vote to reappoint Jeff Myers to the zoning board for a term of three years. Would entertain a motion of second to do so.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kirkpatrick. Roll call?
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. Next, motion and vote to reappoint Amy Rose to the zoning board for a term of three years. Would entertain a motion of second to do so.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Carnes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cruz. Roll call?
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. We can skip C. I guess we can table a Jeannie. Let me know if she did. Wants to step down from the park board at this time. So should we just table it, Kaylin, or just skip it?
Just table it.
Okay. Motion of second to table the reappointment of Jeannie Burke to the park board.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Cruz.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Carnes. Roll call?
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. And thanks to her for years of service on there. We'll have an opening for her spot. So if anybody has any names they'd like to suggest, let me know and we'll go through that process. And last, motion and vote to hire Kayden Scarborough as a part-time dispatcher trainee. Would entertain a motion of second to do so.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kirkpatrick. Roll call?
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. All right, on down to ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance 2025-00702. Coordinates imposing municipal cannabis retailers occupation tax for the city of Duane and also including prohibited locations for cannabis retailers in the city of Duane. This is for final approval. Again, this is not permitting any specific cannabis dispensaries at this point. Just saying that we will, if one does come, we would collect a 3% tax on that, which is the highest legally allowed, and limiting it to location of, what was it, 1,000?
100 yards.
100 yards from any churches or school facilities, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, and this is for final approval. If nobody has any concerns or questions, would entertain a motion of second.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cruz. Roll call?
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
No.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. Resolution 2025-R0703. Resolution in support of the Illinois America 250 commemoration. This will be for final approval. This came in email from IML, right Ruth, right around the time of 4th of July. And this is a sort of a national program to support, obviously, the 250th birthday of our country next year. So it's got a few things in there we need to do, but this is the first step to becoming one of those communities. So I thought not much more brings everybody together than celebrating the history of our country. So I felt like this was something we should do. Would entertain a motion of second to do so.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Carnes. Roll call?
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. Resolution 2025-R0704. Resolution authorizing non-hazardous waste disposal agreement with Perry Ridge landfill. This is for construction, demolition, and sludge disposal. This is for debate and public display. Ruth, what we got?
This is just, they give us a discounted rate and we have to renew the contract every year for our sludge and our demo.
Okay. But you got any questions for Ruth? Not, would entertain a motion of second for public display.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Carnes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cruz. Roll call?
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes. Mayor Downs?
Yes. Resolution 2025-R0705, resolution authorizing a redevelopment agreement with Dane Mason to expand business at 13 North Washington Street. This is for debate and public display. I think Jeff will have an explanation for us.
Dane Mason has created quite a nice little business on North Washington Street, and it's improved every year, and he's come to us for some assistance with TIF. He's going to do a $33,000 total project, a portion of which would be the acquisition of land on 12 North Mulberry Street, which is behind his existing store, which is behind the Grand Theater, and he, so basically it'll be like a through, through lot business, a cross alley type business, and that, that lot will be, will be graded and used for sales, plant materials, inventory stock, nursery stock, like maybe I could talk him into maybe doing a few live Christmas trees, I don't know. Then there'll also be an awning added to the existing building and some lighting in the existing building, so it'll look, it'll look yet better, so they keep reinvesting in their property. The total cost of the project is about $33,000, and they're asking for an $8,000 TIF reimbursement.
Okay. Any questions for Jeff? Dane and his wife Flo are here. You guys have anything to add or questions before we move forward?
Thank you for the opportunity, and yeah, if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to, happy to answer anything.
Okay. Thanks for your, like Jeff said, continued reinvestment, we appreciate it. All right, would entertain a motion and second to put that on public display for two weeks.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Carnes?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kirkpatrick. Roll call?
Commissioner Carnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor Downs?
Yes. All right, and last, we have resolution 2025-R0706, which is a resolution, resolution authorizing a redevelopment agreement to demolish, remove building debris and landfill the failed building structure located at 115 East Main. This is for debate and public display. Do you want to talk, Jill?
Sure.
Okay.
As we all know, we've been discussing 115 East Main since about August, right Annie? So we're all eager to move this forward, and we have a vendor from Marion Knee Cut that we've met with, visited the site a couple of times. He's very interested in the job. We need to revise the TIF as the costs have changed, landfill prices have changed, and they're anticipating the job will take less than two weeks, and they tell us they can have it done before winter, which is, I think, what we all want. So I know we want to get the street opened and move on, so I make a motion.
Yeah, did they give any timeframe on when they thought they would start?
Well, they're pretty busy right now because of the tornado in Marion.
Okay.
They've got a lot of jobs, but he said that, he didn't see any problem of having it done before October.
Okay. Awesome. All right, anybody have any questions for Jill? Kaylin, you seen those documents, you good with everything?
Yep.
Okay. Again, this would just be for debate and public display, so we'd have two weeks for questions or concerns if you guys have any at that time. If not, would entertain a motion and second for public display.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Cruz?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kirkpatrick. Roll call?
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Mayor Downs?
Yes. I'm sorry, what are you telling me, Ruth?
The last resolution isn't on your agenda, but it's on the revised one. You don't have that in front of you.
Okay. You think I might need that, huh?
Resolution authorizing emergency purchase of AC and heat.
All right, so resolution 2025-R0707, emergency purchase on our air conditioner for the police station, are the quotes in their packet? I know I've seen them.
No, I just.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're working on getting quotes for the police station. I know I talked to Chief Ingram, it's been, what, 80 some degrees in there?
Office is 84.
Last, last couple of days, so of course it happens right in the hottest part of the summer, but what this does is, is gives, you guys would grant me the authority to garner bids in an emergency situation and find the best deal with the best equipment that we can possibly get for, to replace what we have. So that's what we'd be doing on 25-R0707. So would entertain a motion and second to, it'd be for final approval, Ruth?
Should be.
Okay.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Ward?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Carnes. Roll call?
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Mayor Downs?
Yes. Okay. On other business, and the reason this isn't on the agenda, this was my fault, we have Tyshene Roundtree and Sumit Kargill, is that right, from Solar on Earth, and they had reached out to me, some of their colleagues, over the last couple of months. They're working with the Illinois Shines Community Solar Program, and basically this is us exploring a way to save money on our electric bills, which run in the quarter
Farms because you do have to pay back every, um, all of the credits that you do, uh, get placed on your bill. And also there's like the taxes and the surcharge and the service fees from Ameren that we can't touch with these credits. So let's say you'd received a credit of about seventeen thousand fifty-nine dollars onto your bill. Thirty to six days later, you would get an invoice from the solar farm. And instead of you paying that seventeen thousand, uh, seventeen thousand fifty-nine, you'd be paying about fifteen thousand one hundred and eighty-three. We're giving you a, um, savings of one thousand eight hundred and seventy-six monthly. Now, obviously, everybody's bills are not perfect. They do range, so the credits do range as well. So in the summer months when the solar farms are producing more, you'll see a higher credit. In the wintertime, it's a little bit less, but that's why we always say the guaranteed percentage is, um, guaranteed off of your yearly spend and not every single month. And that is with the credit of eleven percent.
So pretty much our goal is to kind of educate you guys about the program, see whether or not you guys want to benefit from it. Um, in our industry, we call it found money. Um, basically, that's money that you can reallocate back into your budget to use it towards that A C that just broke down with the police station across the street. That's money that you can reallocate back into maybe a pizza party if you guys throw one at the end of the year. Pretty much whatever you guys do with the money is your guys' business. But this is just a program to not only promote clean energy initiatives, but also give back to the people that outfund these projects. Now, did you guys have any questions for us?
You mentioned something a minute ago that's not that important. I, it is important. You said Marion had went to this.
Yep.
And then you said the area of school. Do you mean in the Marion School District?
Yep.
In the Marion School?
So, uh, for the Marion, uh, School District, so the Marion, uh, School District is enrolled into the program, so is the city of Marion. I do want to note crediting takes between three to six months to appear in your guys' utility bill. Meaning, we went through the process of presenting to the board, having the lawyer go over all the contracts and such. We went through all the approval process and we approved to enroll them into the program. They just haven't started to receive the credits yet, just because, um, when the community solar program first started in the state of Illinois, um, it was only a discount off of your guys' supply portion of the utility bill. Um, thanks to legislation that just got passed through the Illinois Shine Program, they now can credit it pretty much the entirety of your utility bill, as long as your third-party supplier is consolidated directly onto your Ameren bill. But, uh, to answer your question, yes, um, the city of Marion and the school districts were also enrolled into the program, and we went through their board's approval process to, uh, get them enrolled.
And they signed up with you guys?
Yes.
Okay. And any other cities or schools around here?
I actually have a list of cities and schools that have enrolled into the program. And what my plan is to do, actually email you afterwards, just so you have a reference list that you can spread out to the rest of the board members. So they're not only able to review the information, think about it, but they also have something to go back to when they want to ask more questions. And then maybe during your next board meeting or whenever, we can answer those questions for you as well. Because I know that, number one, we kind of just threw a lot of information in front of you guys. Um, each of you should actually have a packet at all of your guys' desks. Um, I won't lie, it's not much of a page-turner, because this is about saving electricity or saving money on your, uh, utility bills, but it contains all the information in regards to the program. As well as if you guys look at the very front page, um, it has our number and our email as well. Those are our personal lines, so if you give us a call, feel free. If you call after seven, it better be for a good reason. Um, but besides that, that's pretty much the name of the game. Um, Solar on Earth, uh, we pride ourselves in being a community solar company. Meaning, we don't do rooftop solar, we don't do third-party supplier. We strictly work with community solar, and we try to give you guys the best bang for your buck. Meaning, we try to get you guys enrolled the best program that's going to work for you and your town, and also try to help your residents as well get enrolled into the program. Because, in my personal opinion, unfortunately, um, Ameren has raised their rates. Um, you probably all have gotten a utility bill that's probably doubled over the past couple of months. So the good thing about the program is that whether or not your rates go up or down, you're still guaranteed that credit. And from what we've seen so far in the past, Ameren is not lowering their rates anytime soon. Um, so that is also a good thing of the program, meaning if your rates do go up, which they more than likely will, you're still guaranteed that credit. And the lifetime of the solar farms, by the way, it's about fifteen to twenty years. Um, that doesn't mean you're locked into a fifteen- or twenty-year contract, that just means that the solar farms last in about twenty years. And then if you guys are wondering what happens after twenty years, I have no idea. Um, there's, there, there's a couple ideas of what they're going to do afterwards, but who knows what's going to happen in twenty years, you know? Um, did you guys have any other questions besides that?
I think I'm good. I'll talk to some people in Marion.
I'll read all this.
Yeah. Um, I got a couple friends over there we can talk to, so do all that, check into, be in touch.
So our next step would be, if you guys are curious, um, right now, what we're doing is probably, uh, getting ahold of your guys' utility bills to give you a more detailed proposal based on what your actual estimate figures are. Um, and then what we like to do is get, uh, put on your guys' next board meeting or agenda, or however long you guys need to do, think about the decision, or reach whoever, uh, you want to reach. We can also connect you with our contacts over at Marion as well. And then, from there, we just have you guys vote on the decision whether or not you guys want to enroll. And then, like I said, it takes three to six months for the credit to be put on your utility bill. And I will note, in some instances, it can take a little bit longer, just because, uh, and these kind of matters, they kind of drag their feet, but, like I said, once you guys get put down for the credit, you guys are guaranteed the credit for the next twenty years.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Perfect. Thank you guys so much.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Commissioner's comments? Kaylin?
Nothing from me.
Ian?
Nothing, thank you.
Wade?
Stay cool.
Mike?
You know, Jill, thanks for the work you guys have done getting this building down. It's, we have to pay him the bill.
Yeah. Yeah. Jill?
Um, I'll wait for you to talk, but congratulations to the swim team on that SISL championship. It's a big deal.
Coach?
What Wade said, stay cool.
Yeah. Ruth?
Um, congratulations to the swim team and someone else that may have had a new addition.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, um, you know, when I was on the, on the council before, uh, I got married while I was a commissioner, and Kathy West, and I remember saying that she didn't think that had ever happened with her before, so she made a point to congratulate me. So, I don't know that anybody else has had a baby since we've been here, so congratulations to Kaylin and, uh, his wife Katie, and Collins and KJ on the new addition of Callahan. Completed the family, right, Kaylin, finally?
Yes, uh, you know, I thought we'd have two children. My wife said we're going to have three. We compromised and had three. So now we have three children.
Yeah. Well, you're still married.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, congratulations. He's a cute little guy, and, uh, look forward to seeing him. I need to bring him to a council meeting sometime soon.
Yeah, she was right. We should have had three.
Uh, and like Jill said, uh, congratulations to the swim team, uh, coached by Ike Minton and Lauren Heap and Callio Striker. They won the twenty-twenty-five SISL championship on, uh, Saturday, in which Kaylin and I about melted out there over a period of about six hours in the, in a about a hundred and fifteen degrees. But, uh, very proud of our team, our coaches, and, and happy for the community. And, uh, of course, our kids are on the team, and it's just cool to see how happy they were getting a championship, and brought the trophy back into town, got the police and fire escort, and, uh, a couple of the older girls rode in the back of a, um, convertible and held the trophy high for everybody to see. So, just a really proud day for our town, and, uh, first one they've won in nine years, but I think Jill, you said they've won eight or nine of them now, right?
This is eight.
Over the period of years, yeah, so dating back to the early two thousands. Um, so, yeah, so happy for them, and, um, I'm going to talk to the coaches and stuff about having them at a future meeting and doing a, you know, Swimming Indians Day in Ducoy, and getting a picture with the trophy and stuff, so. Believe that is all I have. Anybody in the crowd have anything? Pete, you're good. Annie, good. Thanks for coming.
I was wondering what the financials were for that, coming to knock, uh, the building down.
Oh, uh, Ruth got the thing. I think she can give it to you afterwards, yeah.
Yeah, estimate's a hundred and five thousand.
Anybody else? Sir, you got anything? No? Okay. Uh, I think we do need executive session, um, again, unfortunately, um, to discuss, uh, Open Meetings Act, uh, Section two C one, two C two, two C five, two C six, and two C eleven. Would entertain a motion in a second to enter, leave open session, go into executive session in six twenty-nine.
No move.
Motion by Commissioner Carnes. Second by Commissioner Ward. Roll call.
Commissioner Carnes?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick? Yes.
Yes. It's cooler in there, Mike.
A little bit complicated for me to drive.
Yeah, it looks, it looks different.
Yeah. Okay, 7:00 PM, we're back in open session. Taking no action from executive session. Would entertain a motion second to adjourn.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Carnes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kirkpatrick. Roll call.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Mair Down.
Yes.